All right, first thing we have is the, uh, is the minutes in front of you. Uh, are there any questions, any additions or deletions? If not, entertain a motion to approve. Motion made by Alden Smith, or here second? Second by Alden Gardner, on favor say aye. Alright, first thing we need to do before we go into our agenda is we need, we have two agenda items that were, that original, uh, you haven't corrected, one on island number seven and eight of the agenda. The wording was wrong on that. So, what you have in front of you is number, island number seven, and I'm gonna see if we can entertain a motion to, uh, change that agenda, I mean, uh, agenda verbiage. Uh, it should read, "Board Discussion and Vote on Approval of a Resolution of Support of the Community Water and River Fund for Fiscal Year 2022-23." Can I have a motion to re-correct the verbiage in that? Motion made by Alden Smith, or here second? Second by Alden Prost, on favor say aye. And same thing, number eight, it should say, "Board Discussion and Vote on Approval of a Resolution of Support of the Local Government Assistance Program 2022-23 Application." Can I have a motion on that? Motion made by Alden Smith, or here second? Second by Alden Smith, on favor say aye. Okay, alright. Are there no comments? Is there any public comments on our agenda items? Anybody would like to comment on either agenda item? Alright, Ms. Dory?
Number ten on the agenda is where I think y'all are being given the budget for the upcoming fiscal year. I mean, I know that no action will be taken today, but I had come, I think, a month or so ago asking that it just be entertains that the money's donated for the fireworks shows, be increased per annum from ten thousand per year to twenty thousand. Of course, I haven't seen the budget and it may reflect that, but just in case it did not, I wanted to, to again ask if you would please consider doing that so we can keep these shows for the New Year's Eve and Fourth of July fireworks shows for our shared community.
I, I think we did that, did we, uh, in our...
And, uh, that's where it was, I could change the cost. So, but I guess we need to increase it a little bit as much as we ask.
Because just for clarification, didn't you start a different account for, uh, for the fireworks fund, uh, separate from the, from the town?
Yes, sir, I have a 501(c)(3) now for the fireworks show. Um, and previously in years past, the town, both, um, the town of Adalia and the city of Natchez gave ten thousand per year to be divided five thousand each show. And as the cost has increased, um, I was asking if you would consider going to twenty thousand per year.
Yeah, that would be, but you will, uh, whatever town it is, we'll certainly look at that.
But yes, it does have its own separate 501(c)(3).
Alright, thank you very much.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Linda Bell, and I'm here to discuss, on behalf of my mother who has been a resident for this town, city, first now town, all her life. And the, number four is what I'm here to discuss. Board Discussion and Vote on Appointment of Mayor Pro Tem to Town of Adalia. I know right now, Mr. Gardner is the mayor of Pro Tem. My question to you is, how long is that for?
Is that a question? Now, Mayor Pro Tem, Mayor Pro Tem can be added to the agenda every month. There's no, there's no term, there's no set, no set term for Mayor Pro Tem. It is, it is actually elected on within, that, uh, if one of the board members wants to put it on the agenda, we can put it on there and they can vote on it. There's not, there's not any term tied to Mayor Pro Tem.
I thought it was always one year.
No, it's not. There's, there's no term in Mayor Pro Tem, Pro Tem.
Okay, well, he's, as of today, he still is, correct?
He still is, and he's been, he's been there for four years.
Three.
Three? Okay.
Well...
Three.
On behalf of my mother, like I said, I'm here to support him as then Mayor Pro Tem, because he has done more for District Two, which she lives in, than any past alderman. He has done his best to get this compensation for the slough, which, I don't know if you all know, that it floods. I have lived there. I've been out of the day for thirty-plus years, and things have not. Y'all may see it that it changed, but I don't see it. Because the slough, when it rains a lot, it floods. People have to leave their houses. So, he has done a lot for District Two, as I stated previously, than the aldermen that were there before him. So, to bring this up now, somebody has an agenda for Mr. Gardner, you stand firm, stand up for your beliefs, because no weapon formed against you will prosper. And every tongue that arises against you, you will refute, refute it. That's the courage or inheritance of the Lord. So, all of you, I mean, you got people here, and I only come home to see my mom. You got people here that believe and hear everything somebody say. They're grounded in it. But I advise you to wake up and see what's happening around you. You may think you know, but you don't. Stand firm, you know who your Redeemer is, because he is.
Thank you, but I will, I will say this, that, you know, this is something that the aldermen choose amongst themselves. This is not, this is not some kind of matter-of-fact. Alden Prost, today, he was Mayor Pro Tem the first year we served. He found out it was more of a headache than it was, I mean, but, I mean, it was inconvenient. If I was out, you had some science jacked to do something.
Well, I didn't have much to go on.
But, but anyway, all I'm saying is, is that this is not something, that this is something that's council and select anybody at any time. It, it makes no difference to me who that, that's why I don't recommend, because it's not my position to do that. Now, there have been accusations that this is me doing this. It's not me, Ms. Bell. So, don't even, don't even say that, because I saw some of the posts. It's not me.
I said it, and, and I firmly believe it.
I have not, I have not done anything to this man. I have, anything that's happened, it's happened yourself, okay? Okay, so thank you, anybody else?
You said it.
Okay.
You said it.
My name is Hugley Woodfall. I am a citizen of the day. I've been a citizen of the day all my life. I'm not involved with the district, but if, but he's the one I have to call to get something done, if I want something done. He's always been that person, because no one else has supported us. So, I'm here to represent him also.
Okay.
Good evening.
Three?
Uh, my name is Constance Hill. And my question was, uh, I was looking at number four as well, and I can recall, because I come to the meetings often, and I can recall June, I thought it was supposed to be a year, because I thought that's what you had said. I know you guys keep minutes and everything, so you can probably look at your minutes, but I think you said something about June of it's supposed to be reelection time for the Mayor Pro Tem. And I was just curious as to why was it brought up so soon? Because like this young lady here, I thought it was supposed to be a year as well. And I would just like you to elaborate and explain to me the law part of that. Is that, is it lawful to just add it anytime you feel like it, because you're the mayor? Or you're adding it because the alderman, and all the woman, excuse me, might have been wanting it to happen?
Number one again, by law, there is no term.
Okay.
However, if I have an alderman come up to me and request to address Mayor Pro Tem, I put it on the agenda, their request. And it doesn't matter, if Alden Gardner came up to me and said, "I want to put Mayor Pro Tem on the agenda," I can put it on the agenda. There's no term.
Okay, because I, I, me personally living here, um, I'm from Natchez, Mississippi. And it seems as if there's an agenda behind this situation, and I guess maybe just me being a member of the NAACP kicking in, I don't know. But I'm just curious if this is a little black and white, or is this a gray area? Or what's really happening?
I take offense to bring that, it has nothing to do with black and white. This town is not a racial town. We have, we have, Linda, who spoke while ago, was a classmate of mine. We went to school together, we got along together, we played together, we, we played sports together. I'm not gonna sit here and let our town, with everything we've got going for it, be treated like this and bring this question, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, it's just a question, I mean, you asked if anybody had anything to say. So, is my right as a citizen of thirty-three Alabama to come and, and ask that?
Buzz, buzz had nothing to do with this, this was mine.
You know, so I, I'm just curious, because I just wanted to know, because like I said, you know, back in June and recently when we were voting for Ms. Kiara, and she didn't get the same thing as the white guy had. I just was curious about that, that's all, about the amount of money and stuff, and what was really happening. I mean, is my right, unless you're saying it is not?
We had, we had that discussion then, okay? That's not, that's not on the agenda tonight.
Okay, I'm just curious, I'm just, you know, putting it out there in front of the...
And I'll do that in there with you, I mean, afterwards, I'll be glad to sit down and talk and link to anything you want to talk about. But that's not on our agenda tonight for what we discussed.
Okay, also, tonight for the discussion, number four?
Yeah, you can discuss number four.
You just said you took offense to what I said?
No, I told you, you, you was trying to say there's an agenda of black and white here. It's not, that's what you said, I think.
Yes, that's what I said.
Okay, I, I, I just...
Oh, is it a gray area, that's, that's what I said?
What do you mean, gray area?
Just a little, you know, sometimes it can be a gray area, sometimes it's even something stood, and that's why I'm here, so that I can get an understanding of what's actually happening.
But, when, when I say tonight here, it's a riding home.
Okay.
It's not a gray, right or wrong?
Okay, okay. Well, may I say this to you? If you guys are voting on it tonight, I hope that you guys are in one accord with it, because, you know, in order for a town to move forward, you have to be on one accord. And that doesn't matter if you're black or white. That's the word God, you have to be on one accord.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Alright, if there's nothing more, we're gonna move on. Uh, we're gonna move to the first thing on our agenda, presentation financial statements for March 2022, this is how we have our faculty here.
The financial statements include the balance sheet as of March 31st, 2022, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances for the nine months ending 4th to 31st, 2022, a summary budget to actual comparison by department, and a detailed budget to actual comparison by department. These financial statements have been distributed to the aldermen and department heads for their review. In summary, the town has combined cash in the bank of ten point five billion, including restricted, restricted funds of seven point nine million in the hydro fund and one point two million in the sales tax fund, investments of four point six million, which includes the hydro reserve fund of two point four million, one point five million in the general fund, and seven hundred and five thousand of offer funds. Total assets are forty-eight point two million, total liabilities are ten point nine million, and total fund balances is thirty-seven point three million. The statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in fund balances for the nine months ending March 31st, 2022 indicates combined revenues of thirty-one point nine million, total expenditures of twenty-six point seven million, or change in net position of five point one million. Revenues are under budgeted at sixty-eight percent of budget with three months left to go. Sales tax collections remain higher than the same period last year and are approximately a hundred and twenty-six thousand over budget. Intergovernmental revenue is eight percent. The money in priority five, the state capital outlay, has not been obligated as expected in the budget for the port. The hydro royalties are lower than expected, but changes, charges for services are higher than expected due to high energy costs. Total expenses are at seventy-two percent of budget, which is slightly lower than budget. Personnel costs are right on target. Materials and supplies and other services are higher than budget due, due to high utility costs. Capital outlay is at ten percent. We do not anticipate this catching up on the remaining fiscal year due to the port not giving the funding for the capital outlay to buy the land. So, that's the biggest reason why the, uh, capital outlay is low and the revenue is also low. We have borrowed four point four million of, on transmission line and substation debate to cover materials, engineering costs, legal fees incurred, and certain portions of the vital rates from the landowners. The project began in June 2020. We have received the appraisal of last remaining portion of land for the vital rate and are prepared to take necessary steps to move forward on the acquisition. We are still working with FEMA to recover emergency work and the grave removal costs caused by the 2021 winter storm. The largest portion of these categories have been obligated, and we should be receiving these funds soon. The town has received a portion of seven hundred and five thousand of the one point four million allocated to the town from the American Rescue Plan. The money is on the balance sheet, it's a special revenue fund. None of this money has been spent and is being held as a liability until the funds are expensed. The remaining seven hundred and five thousand will be sent later this year. The money is not included in the current budget and, and the expenses paid using these funds will need board approval. These financials include capital outlay of five hundred and twenty-six thousand of a five point five million dollar capital outlay budget. Sidewalks and roadway improvements have been made at various locations around town, and various equipment has been purchased. However, three point two million in capital outlay is for the port, of which zero has been spent. The revenue to purchase the land has not been appropriated by the state, therefore, the town has not made steps to acquire the land needed to complete the project. Also, the fleet of vehicles from Enterprise has not been received, therefore, our costs for those vehicles have not been expensed. We have been working on the budget for the 2022-2023 fiscal year. The budget is not included in the packets, but will, but will be sent for your review and public inspection, uh, inspection next week. The budget ordinance will be introduced to the ninth meeting, and we are planning to get the board's approval at the regular, next regularly scheduled meeting in June. It will be necessary to amend the 2021-22 budget due to one percent changes during the year. The only funds which require a minimum are the general fund and special revenue grants. The amended budget will be presented before the end of this fiscal year.
Any questions from council or this other? Uh, I will, we will be, I'll be reaching out to each one of the, one of the things we have not plugged in yet is a, we're still analyzing a cost, uh, cost of living rate, uh, cost of living rate across for all our employees. We've all seen the high cost thing, we want to make sure that we still, uh, you know, live in today's economy, how, how high it can get, we're coming on the rest of this a little bit, so... Uh, so, no other questions, I'm gonna move on. First thing we have that's gonna require a vote is, uh, board discussion vote on approval of occupational license application. First one is Adalia Pond LLC, and it's a legitimate approval. That's at sixteen twenty-four Carter Street. This is only a change of ownership, I assume this is the, uh, Danny Huxley's, uh... So, is there any questions, are there any motion to make that? Alden? Uh, motion made by Alden Smith, second by Alden Bess, on favor say aye. You opposed? Next thing we have is board discussion vote on approval of sign-up application, DCAG LLC, nine oh three Carter Street. This is a, this is a, uh, sign-up, they just relocated. And, uh, let's see the, the reditions there, what you have, any questions on this? Okay, they're mostly accept. Both made, Alden Prost, I hear second. Second by Alden Bess, on favor say aye. Now, we have board discussion vote on the form of the Mayor Pro Tem for the town of Dealey, Louisiana. Mr. Grant Smith, you call with questions, that's so great. And, uh, after, you know, libraries and things, uh, there's, there's nothing to do proper, I mean, in my past, my parents have sat down as alderman or anything, I mean, I just, this has been a concern of mine ever since COVID. If Buzz was to go down, get on the bench, or whatever, already, not, not that, but... Who's, who's more fit up here or qualified to run the town? And that's, that's what it's about. It's about all of you guys, I mean, y'all, it's best representation we can put out there. Uh, and, you know, I'm not getting into what progress this went through, but I mean, it demonstrated that, that might not be who we need to represent. And I'm, I'm, I'm gonna ask a question, but I'm gonna stand from the board, on the stage. Uh, but, just as far as the, I mean, I, I'm an empty, I mean, that's, you know, but, but I think with, when I look on this board, I mean, gee, John's been running the town for twenty-some years. I, I would feel like he could step in and run the town, wouldn't he? I mean, I just, I don't know why it's gotta be so complicated, especially with what's, what's at... Uh, I mean, I'm not trying to stir the pot, and I, I mean, it's time to look right for the town. Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, go ahead, John Bess, clear your head.
Alright, motion made by John Bess, um, John Bess, Mayor Pro Tem, very second. Second by Alden Bess, seven, who wrote all votes?
Motion offered by Alden Smith for John Bess to be the, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, the second by... Alden Bess, second, Alden, uh, Alden Bess?
Four.
Alden, ready?
I'm gonna make a comment, the, the, not because I feel that Robert is not capable of running the town, that's not why I'm voting. Yes, it's because I have given him my word that I was going to vote for him last year, and I didn't. And this year, I gave him my word again, so I'm voting yes.
Okay.
Alden Gardner?
No.
Alden Prost? Alden Smith?
Yes.
Mayor of the record, say that you have thirty days.
Because we were at that point, and he raised some topics that I feel like I haven't thought through yet.
Well, we're, we're, we're gonna move on.
Hold on, we're moving on, but they need, he was in the first discussion here, almost like they weren't Alden in the second. So, I think I have the right to, because I can rest it off. There is no documentation that says that I cannot see and serve as Mayor Pro Tem or Holligan from what you've just seen that I went through. So, if you had been there a quarter, if you had read proper documentation, and got the right information, you would know that me sitting up here does not misrepresent me as of him on the Alden board or the town.
I can say through the...
I'm just, I'm just representing, as national beliefs.
I gotta say something too, because I can't do the little Manchester comments that may... I'll go give a second. I've heard Bess' name, I've heard Bess' name, I never heard Pro Tem's name. But, I'm not qualified, right? Thank you, that's on my phone, I don't want to make it.
Alright, that's enough. Well, I can tell you what's not, okay, next thing is number five, board discussion vote on approval of funding for 2022 summer youth program, the Great Mount Carmel Missionary, Red Church, Patrion, uh, Patrion is not here. Uh, each year this is brought up, uh, the last two years, COVID has kind of wrecked that program. Uh, and so, last year, the monies were not spent. I think that's for the same thing, the agreement discussion from the council to make a motion to do it.
My, my car, the session purposes, I thought that when we previously discussed these, like, it was openly done, we didn't have to come make the table every year. My question, why are we coming back to the table? We already advocated this, and we know this is what it is. I understand with COVID going on, if it was a stop to it, that's one thing, but we back at square one again, attacking to this discussion that it seems like for this program, only we put this on the agenda, but maybe this section, because it's certainly, you know, I have no idea, but it just seems like, um, we, we stated and said that we will approve it, it should be a known fact that it's approved, that I don't know if the minutes have reflected when we first agreed to approve this, uh, years ago, but every year, this is being put in, I'll go forward to saying that when we already do that budget, I'm gonna allocate, actually allocate more funds for our youth, for the children in, in that budget. So, they can hire more youth, more kids, they're college-age kids, that can go work with their programs with. Because if we can do other things with hydro, whatever money, we can make sure we take care of our own and for yours.
Okay, the reason why this is brought up every year, because we feel not out of COVID, they're calling about a surge. Uh, two years ago, the monies were not spent for that. So, it is my understanding and my wish that we bring it up every year to discuss and make sure it is spent on its intended purpose. That's why we do it every year. And, so, we have, and that should not be a, a start, that shouldn't be a hard thing to do, to do that, so, even. Alright, did I hear motion, did we accept? Motion made by Alden Gardner, very second.
Second.
Second by, uh, Alden, all the way to say aye. Okay, next thing we got is, uh, presentation report setting up a mobile unit for cancer screening, and Mrs. Mire, a paper, is she here? Hi, Miss Sakers?
Thank y'all for letting me come be here tonight. I'm with Mary Byrd Parkin's Cancer Center, and, um, we're a nonprofit, and we have nine cancer care centers, but we also have a prevention-on-the-go program that they've already, they've been doing eighteen parishes for many years. The prevention-on-the-go program is twenty years old, but recently, in September of 2020, they expanded to the Delta region, and I cover twelve parishes. But we offer, uh, five different types of free cancer screenings, that being oral, prostate, breast, colorectal, and skin. And we don't do them all at every, uh, screening, there's different ones, and of course, COVID, um, limited some of that. But, um, we were recently here doing, um, giving out free colorectal kits. Um, I was working with the sheriff's office, and we're going to be in Faraday on May eighteenth, I think everybody, um, I gave you a flyer, but we'll be doing breast, um, screenings that day. Um, there'll be, um, for those that are not forty years old, we'll be doing clinical breast exams, but then, um, also mammograms and giving out colorectal kits that day as well. So, um, we're here to stay, and we're gonna be, um, scheduling more, um, different types of screenings, um, at various times. So, I just wanted to make sure that all of you knew what we were doing and could help spread the word. I put some flyers in the lobby area out there, um, but, you know, of course, COVID limited people from getting their regular annual screenings, but also, you know, a lot of the Delta area is underserved and, and did not have access and have transportation issues. So, we, um, last year, we did sixty-four screening events in the Delta area, and we've, uh, screened over six hundred people. Um, we've had, um, several abnormal findings, um, and only one cancer diagnosed, so that's good, we're getting people, uh, screened and, and getting those problems addressed before it turns into something worse. Um, if you have any questions, you can let me know, but I also put my card on there. Um, we like to, um, try to find organizations or different, uh, groups that we can partner with that can help get people to the screenings, or, when I say that, promote them and, and help us reach the people that we need. You know, I do know that transportation is a big issue, um, but that's why we go into all the little towns and villages, um, trying to make it easier.
Miss Sakers, if you will, if you will give us a heads up, we try to put it on our, you know, our advertising in local papers, and also on our Facebook page, our internet, because this is something that's important. I know personally, it's been me right now, you know, so... Uh, you know, I think it's one of the things, especially those of us in Long Island too, because they say that we didn't, we didn't be screened. It's really, uh, a lot of us earlier, some people that's in senior family didn't be screened earlier.
That's true, um, that was the case in my family. My grandmother had colon cancer, so I started earlier, uh, because I had family history. But, usually... But usually, we give out kits to people that are forty-five and up, but if you're ha, if you're having issues or you have a history in your family, you can get a kit earlier. Um, the kit's not the fix-all, but, you know, it's, it's great in between those colonoscopies, because it'll help, uh, pick up anything in between there. Um, and it's easy, it's in a plastic posters paid envelope, you just mail, take it home and mail it back. Um, and it's not difficult at all, but, uh, I appreciate your time, and, um, when we had the screening, uh, at the sheriff's office, we had a great turnout for that event, so was very pleased with that.
Well, if you think, anytime you can set us up here, I feel like I'm sure the council will be okay, but it does, it would save a life, we really appreciate it.
How often do you come, come back?
Um, it will, we're getting a new mobile unit that's just gonna serve this area. Right now, we're sharing three unit, or two units, and so, um, we'll be able to schedule more. I, you know, we'll just rotate it between the twelve parishes, so, um.
I was wondering, like, if it'd be on a quarterly basis, or semi-annual, uh.
We just have to see kind of how it works out, um, I'm not, I would say probably every quarter we could do that. It may not be breast every time, because we also do the prostate and, and the others. We haven't been doing oral because of COVID, but normally we do.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, next thing we have is board discussion vote on approval of a resolution of support of the Community Water and District Fund for fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. This is a, uh, thirty-five thousand dollar, uh, grant that we receive each year and requires approval by the board, uh, approving the resolution for that. Did I hear motion? Motion made by Alden, uh, Betts, second of Alden Smith, all the papers say aye. Next thing we have is just another grant, thirty-five thousand. Board discussion vote on approval of a resolution of support of the local government assistance program two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, rent application. Same thing, this one, uh, is also a grant, we, you can use this one for equipment and things of nature, sanitation streaks, or utility office. Hear motion? Motion made by Alden Smith, very second. Second of Alden Pro, all the papers say aye. Okay, uh, this is another introduction of, we've already introduced this one once, but we had to introduce it again of an ordinance to declare the malportionment status of the current district plan of the election districts of the town of Vidalia, utilizing the population data from the two thousand twenty federal decennial census. Hear a motion for the introduction?
So my question is, will we see any kind of map or anything? So when is that process gonna start?
It's gonna, well, it's already been done in the parish, and since the town does not have many elections coming up, we have to the end of the year. Uh, the one that's doing the parish is, they're also doing the day as well, so we felt like we would save money with the parish paper working and what he has to pull out for days and then, so the district to present it.
Who's winning?
Uh.
Strategic Democrats, uh, out of Baton Rouge.
And whether it be multiple maps for us to review and see, or will we just be giving one?
No, he's, he's gonna draw up some options, uh, I think what his plan is, is to, uh, show the board set up with the same, uh, at large district, and also five districts. And he's got to draw the map up according to population changes. So that, this is one step that has to be done to compile the law, is, is recognizing malportionment based on population changes. Then he's gonna work on drawing the map, once that, once the board adopts this ordinance. And he'll come to the board for a meeting, show y'all options that the board can take under advisement, have public hearings, and then y'all vote that in, and really, we need the, the board, the town today, since there's no statewide election as far as Alden, we've got two years. This is something that needs to be done by the end of the year to, to get it set up.
So we have to have two public meetings as well?
I don't know about the number of meetings, but.
I've kind of been, when I researched it, I saw we had to have two public meetings. Then, um, some cities that are doing this are even giving up to five to six maps to look at, and it ain't just okay to be, it's multiple maps. So do we know how many maps that they're gonna present?
I, I do not know right now, but, you know, once, once this first step is recognizing malportionment, he'll be working up plans, meeting with us, and he can settle a meeting with individuals, board members, and one, uh, the, the board president, and, uh, answer any questions that you have on that.
Okay, fair motion, thank you, motion made by Alden Pro, second of Alden Bets, all the papers say aye. And next thing we got is introduction of an ordinance adopting operating budget revenues expenses for the town of Vidalia, Louisiana for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three. This is a vote for the introduction, did I hear motion?
Motion.
Motion made by Alden Diddy, Alden woman, Diddy, go here second. Second of Alden Bets, all the papers say aye. Okay, board discussion vote to approve designated in forty-seven of the lead agenda for the town of Vidalia, hear motion? Motion made by Alden Smith, go here second. Second of Alden's, uh, Betts, all the papers say aye. Okay, uh, now, board discussion vote on fixing the whole amount to be maintained in the hydro, uh, reserve fund and according to ordinance number five eighty-eight. Basically, what is required by, before June the thirtieth, the council has to approve the two highest months of generation of the hydro, we have to have in the reserve. And right now, that amount stands at, uh, the highest amount is nine hundred and ninety thousand a month. So one, one million nine hundred and eighty thousand dollars would have to be in a reserve. Well, we have two point three, so we have, we're carrying more than what's required. Uh, in case of a low water thing, you wouldn't get your monies, I don't see that ever being an issue, but, uh, I, I just recommend us leaving the two point three billion in the reserve. Uh, and I hear motion, we leave the two point three billion, which is more than sufficient. Motion made by Alden Betts, very second. Second of Alden Pro, all the papers say aye. Okay, number thirteen is board discussion regarding the American Cruise Line, and this is basically an update. As many of y'all know, that we had, we were on go with everything in American Cruise Line. All the work to have them, uh, locate between the, the salon and the back rooms or the gateway, and they can build a dock. Everything was submitted, the core, coast guard, and, but they're, they're running into some problems from the, the tow boat and tow boat, uh, unions and, and boards, because, uh, the dock was gonna be too far out in the river at that particular dumpster of the Mississippi River. And it is really, treacherous coming around, it's always been there, that water, and that, and they do need some extra room. So right now, we're in the process of either, of being either a shorter dock that'll be in the same location, or maybe even kind of relocate south of there. It's still ongoing, but they're still, do something in Vidalia, but I just want to give everybody update, because everybody said, well, I thought this was the end of the deal, where we had, but that's what's going on now. Any questions from the council about that? Okay, the next thing on our agenda, this is the last thing we have, is board discussion regarding the update on current projections for energy costs during the summer and the fall. Now, I wish I had good news to tell y'all, but, and this is just strictly for information, this is, this is projections. Okay, the Louisiana hub energy price last year at this time was somewhere below thirty dollars a megawatt. Below thirty dollars, between twenty-five dollars and thirty dollars a megawatt. It's been trending upwards, and here just recently, the last money's paid was just under seventy dollars a megawatt, which is more than tripled. Now, here's the scary part, some of the MISO projections are an auction resulting in capacity prices jumped to two hundred and thirty-six dollars a megawatt. That's, that's some scary numbers, and it was five dollars a megawatt in the previous year. And, and one of the things that's causing this, is the natural gas cost, the natural gas. You know, Europe, if, if, if I'm using Russian, uh, gas and everyone knows the supply, so we know what's happening, supply and demand. The demand's really high out there right now, and that's driving the price up. And therefore, a lot of the generation of power, all of the MISO grid gets through natural gas. So this is one of the things that's causing it, natural gas is also tripled. Transportation costs on the lines, the, um, mission line for the natural gas is going up thirty percent. So I'm just wanting to let people know that when, there is a possibility, now, I will say this, and I'm glad to say it. Back when Lincoln Number One, y'all all heard us talk about Lincoln Number One, one of the things that, that really hurt that was natural gas when it was done, and that was to help hedge against high natural, uh, natural gas cost. And that's what was supposed to make that plant so attractive. So finally, if that plant is generating, it's gonna help offset some of these things for the town today. So that is a good thing, and I, I will do this, if I did say that's gonna help some, by us having that, that plant that's very efficient for the natural gas, if it's gonna be, if it be running. Right now, it is, uh, that's a good thing. MISO, who controls, who gets power on the grid, is looking for a peak demand of a hundred and twenty-four gigawatts power for the summer. And right now, they're projecting they're only gonna have around a hundred and sixteen to a hundred and seventeen gigawatts of generation. So there could be rolling blackouts, there could be controlled blackouts. I'm saying this for information only, just don't be caught unaware if something like this happens. Now, this is not the town today, this is where we get our power. This is where we have to get our power to give to you. So please, please, we're gonna try to minimize that, we've discussed some other things with some orphan monies that we feel like we might can get some relief to some citizens if we can get approval. Once these things start getting, we, I will be coming to the council and asking for some, maybe some help to handle some of these costs, so we can pass on and help our, our citizens with their electricity bill. The good news is, no matter what, we feel, you're still gonna be hopefully fifty percent of whatever you do find a fake part, you're gonna get back that check sometime October and November. Anyway, that's my report, anybody have any questions on that? But we see now even diesel over five dollars, you know, that's made all the cost, food, everything's going up, we've all seen it. So, anyway, I wish I could paint a better picture economically for you, but, uh, we, we're, I'm glad anytime you want to call and talk. Please call me, I'm glad you talked to me, and make some things we can do to help offset some of these time calls. Okay, that's all I had, I hear motion, we adjourn. Motion made by Alden Betts, very second.
Second.
Second of Alden, Alden woman, Diddy, all the papers say aye. We adjourn.